All right, good morning. And thank you all for joining our civic education training on the Board of Education, or as some people may refer to it as the School Board. I'll be one of your guest hosts today, Edward Paul, the First Vice President of the Gwinnett NAACP and Political Action Committee Chair. I also have with me Naheenry, who is our membership, member committee, and also part of our Political Action Committee. She'll be our guest host for today's program. But before we start the program, just a friendly reminder to get out and vote in this May election. We will have judicial elections where you'll elect judges that will represent us around the county. We also have School Board elections in District Two and Four. The cities in District Two are Lawrenceville, Brazelton, Rest Haven, Parks of Swanee. District Four consists of Snellville, Liburn, and parts of Grayson. Finally, we also have the primary election for other elected political positions like County Commissioner, Governor, State Senator, State House Representative, United States Senate, United States House of Representatives, et cetera, where you'll get to elect the person you want to represent the party you're voting for. So whether that's you want the person to represent you if you're a Democratic voter in the Democratic Party for Governor or Senator, or if you're a Republican voter, you want the person to represent you, want to represent that particular elected position for the Republican Party. So that election is also part of this May election. So again, get out and vote. Early voting starts in the second. And actually, you can go ahead and begin to start requesting your absentee ballots now. Just make sure that you make a copy of your state ID or driver's license when you request your ballot. And then also, once you receive your ballot back and mail it off, you make another copy of your license or state ID. This is all part of the new Senate Bill 202. It's basically a new way to sort of sign me people voting absentee ballots. So don't let, don't forget to submit copies of your ID with your ballot, the state ID or driver's license so that your ballot can be counted. Election Day will begin on May 24th will be for Election Day. And you can check your voter registration status at www.mvp.sos.ga.gov. The website also will show you early voting polling locations, as well as, like I say, you can check your status. Also, please, when you choose a ballot, whether that's absentee or if you're voting in person, please choose a party ballot. If you choose a nonpartisan ballot, you won't be able to vote for any primary candidates. So for instance, if you have someone else that you'd like to represent you in the State House of Representatives or State Senate for the Democratic Party or the Republican Party, you won't, if you choose a nonpartisan ballot, you're only going to be able to vote in nonpartisan elections, which would be judges. And if you're in the district that has a School Board election, School Board. So please choose a partisan ballot, whether Republican or Democrat. Just pick one that you typically vote and choose a party ballot. Now on with our program. I'll turn it over to Naheenry, who will do our presentation and slide presentation on the School Board.
Thank you, Edward. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone, and thank you again for joining our civics education training this morning hosted by your Gwinnett NAACP. This morning, our training is on the Board of Education. The Board plays an instrumental role in the lives of our children and daily school operations. We are so honored to have two School Board members with us this morning, Doctors Therese Johnson, Chairperson of District Five, and Karen Watkins of District One. So let's begin. The School Board, also known as the Board of Education, is a corporate body that oversees and manages a public school district's affairs, personnel, and properties. School Board members are elected by the residents of the school district that the Board oversees. School Boards are local officials. Their authority and duties are defined by the state and federal constitutions and laws, as well as by rules and regulations set forth by the Board of Regents and the Commissioner of Education. School Board members have a number of responsibilities. They sign an oath of responsibility as an agent for the education of all children and youth of our county. They learn their district's goals and policies set by their boards in previous years, and they make decisions based on district policies and governmental regulations. They also participate in a periodic review of policies and goals to help define policy and to develop long-term plans, you know, for our districts. They seek to influence state and federal laws and regulations, and they seek adequate state and federal support for our public schools. School Board members have various responsibilities and tasks that they complete. They attend workshops and seminars on a wide range of topics to enable sound decisions. They listen to concerned citizens as the need arises and direct them to the proper district employees for resolution of problems. They also receive reports on the happenings in the school district and regular progress reports on district goals and initiatives to make sound decisions concerning the operations of our school districts. School Boards select superintendents for our district. They gather input from concerned citizens, and they often have to defend and support their decisions. Routine School Board decisions include approving agendas and minutes, accepting reports, warrants or bills, staff placements, program placements for students with disabilities, and meeting schedules, topics, and times. They also are responsible for decisions made by the School Board. This is, I'm sorry, decisions made by the School Board are implemented by the district superintendent and staff. Boards of Education act only as a whole and during public meetings. Remember, the School Board is a corporate body and only has power when they are meeting as a board. Board of Education frequently holds study sessions to discuss and review proposals without taking official action. School Boards create and revise their district's mission, statements, and goals, as well as the district's policies that support them. No one Board member can bind a School Board to a particular action. Persuasion during open discussion is the only way to influence voting on issues before a School Board. School Boards annually adopt a school district budget to determine the number of staff members, to reflect changes in student needs, and to support changes in program offerings. School Boards also ratify contracts with employee bargaining units. They study labor issues and review negotiation processes. They include funds in their budget proposals for negotiated salaries. The Gwinnett County School Board of Education is composed of five citizens elected by voters in the five geographic areas of the county to govern the public school system. The Board members in Gwinnett are responsible for ensuring that school system operations are efficient, financially and legally sound, and focused on the best interests of the community's children. Our School Board members are District One, Karen Watkins; District Two, Steve Nutson; District Three, Dr. Mary Murphy; District Four, Everton Blair Jr.; District Five, Dr. Therese Johnson, who is also the Chairperson of the Gwinnett County School Board Members; and our Superintendent is Dr. Calvin Watts. Here are School Board Members again. Dr. Therese Johnson, Chairperson, District Five; Steve Nutson, Vice Chair, District Two; Karen Watkins, District One; Dr. Mary K. Murphy, District Three; and Everton Blair Jr., District Four. We thank you for tuning in to today's civic education presented by the Gwinnett NAACP. Edward, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, so we'll begin by bringing in our guest today, Dr. School Board Chair of Gwinnett County Public Schools, Dr. Therese Johnson. And we'll also have School Board Member and former Vice Chair, Karen Watkins. All right. Good morning, you all. So do y'all want to have a brief, brief comments before we get started with our Q and A?
Sure. Thank you so much for that excellent presentation, providing information to our community members regarding our Board roles and responsibilities, and also just laying out the details related to who we are and how we work with our Superintendent. So thank you so much.
You're so welcome, Dr. Therese. And do we have any comments for you, from you, Ms. Watkins?
Oh, no, not as yet. Thank you for the presentation. That was great.
Wonderful. Well, could you both please give us a brief introduction of yourselves? And, you know, for those out there who may not, you know, know who you are or be familiar with their roles, please give us a brief introduction, if you don't mind.
Chairperson, Dr. Therese, you want to start?
I am originally from Houston, Texas. I went to college in Puerto Rico, so I speak multiple languages. When I graduated from La Universidad de Sagrado Corazón in San Juan, Puerto Rico, I then went to study graduate school at Columbia University. And after graduating from Columbia, I worked at JP Morgan Chase in Supply Diversity. I worked at the New York City Fire Department as Director of Recruitment and Diversity. I worked in the Harlem Renaissance Economic Development Corporation. And a lot of the work, essentially, the functional roles and responsibilities I've had throughout my career have all been related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I've been in this space for over 20 years. When I relocated to Georgia from New York City, I worked at an organization, AGR Resources, and I worked as a Supply Diversity Director as well. And then I worked in the Marketing and Analytics Department. And then that's when my children were ready to start school, and I decided to start my own school. So I was going through business school at Emory University. And after I graduated from business school, I thought, well, you know, this is a great opportunity to do a nonprofit school that can teach multiple languages and multiple cultures. And I'm very much into the globalization and global mindedness and multilingual, multicultural learning. My dissertation also was in multicultural, multilingual learning and focused on the global purpose approach. So the name of the school was called the Global Purpose Academy. And it was a preschool, it started off as a preschool. And then, as the kids grew, the demand for the parents, they really wanted us to continue. And so it kind of evolved to be from a preschool into nonprofit, private. But it was, it was an opportunity to really, you know, fill a gap at that time. You know, when I was looking for a school for my children, there really were not affordable options that taught about multiple cultures, that taught languages that were beyond just Spanish, but other languages as well. And so the focus is really about how do we create global citizens that can compete in a society that is going to be ever increasingly global? And so, and so that's, that's kind of what got me in this space of education was really, you know, you know, starting my own school. And, and I no longer have the school. And, and I'm serving on the Board, but I still teach. I teach at an organization, and I enjoy working with the sixth and seventh graders. I also am an executive of another organization that I work at. And I'm Chief Equity Officer there. So essentially, I'm still teaching. I'm still, I'm still writing. I'm an author as well. I've published several books. I'm an artist. I love painting. That's one of my pieces right there. But anyway, I love painting and I love, I love acting. I love dancing. I love performing poetry. So art is my life. That's like, eventually, one day, I'd love to be able to kind of, you know, do something that incorporates, you know, the education and the arts. So that's my dream.
Thank you so much for sharing, Dr. Therese. And my goodness, how do you find time to do all of that? But what an impressive background, impressive background. And Ms. Watkins, please tell us a little bit about yourself and how you got into the educational field or your, what prompted your interest, you know, in education?
Yes, so, so some background on me. Graduated from Penn State. Well, I'm actually from, from up north, originally from New York. Lived in DC for a little bit, moved to Pennsylvania when I married my husband. We have two great kids, graduated from Penn State, and worked in the field of commercial real estate for a very, very long time, supply chain management and construction. Now I consult in that field due to, you know, the flexibility with my hours and things of that nature. But, you know, I enjoy supply chain management, how I got into wanting to be a School Board Member. So this goes back to when I first moved here in 2015. Remember, I'm from up north. So it's a little bit different. When, you know, you know, we were choosing, we were trying to choose wisely. When we were trying to move out here to the county that we wanted to go to, because we do have two children, and they would be beginning their school work here, really, meaning kindergarten here, right? So we tried to choose wisely. And, you know, we chose Gwinnett, because my husband, he's a pilot. So, you know, we chose Gwinnett because of its diversity, specifically because of its diversity. And, you know, comparatively in Georgia, that they have a good school system, comparatively, if you look out throughout Georgia. So with that, my experiences with my children in school was where I started becoming a little bit more versed in this space. I didn't even know I was advocating when I first moved here and found out. My children, you know, it wasn't like it was when we looked on the platform and said, oh, we have 16 children in the class. We had 20 to 25 children in the kindergarten class, right? So at that point, I was like, oh, no, you sold, you know, I'm thinking in my head, you sold us a dream, right? You sold us a dream. And at that point, I was already writing my old School Board Member, Carol Boyce. I was writing to commissioners. I was doing all these things. I still have my emails and communications showing me advocating for our lower cut, you know, talking to parents. And, you know, I have a very big parent network, only because we all have, like, you know, thoughts around this. So we, you know, talked about why our class, our size is so large. And at that point, that's when the strategic waivers started being enacted. Those types of things started being enacted, and I started becoming versed in those things so that I can understand how this is impacting our children's education. And then the other point was the discipline disparity. You know, my, my oldest daughter went through, we didn't, we didn't fully understand what was going on, and with some consulting and some, you know, we have, you know, some great advocates. And in Gwinnett, we have a lot of really great advocates, you know, Taylor's, Gwinnett's stuff, that, you know, were able to help guide me through and give me advice on how to manage through a lot of this. At that point, you know, just to help manage so that my child has a decent education without feeling a certain way or getting accused of certain things and working through it. So that's how I got into that space because of my vocality within my community. And there's a lot of parents like me, so we all kind of got together and just, you know, talked about a lot of these things and how it, you know, needs to improve and, you know, get better. And Donna McLeod, who is my, you know, is, is my House District Representative, she actually encouraged me to run for School Board. This wasn't something, you know, politics isn't my, I guess I'm in it now. It's not necessarily my big thing, because it's like a popularity contest of sorts. I just want to get to the work. But this, you know, it was, it was then, when, you know, when she said that I had a, you know, your only way is when you're going to have to see the table. So you're going to have to figure out something. You can sit here and cry all day long about, and just keep on marching at the school and doing all that stuff. But, you know, and it's not the school's intention, you know. I don't think it was an intention, but we do have opportunities to fix a lot of things. And I know firsthand, because of my experience since 2016 with the schools, that I see a plethora of opportunities of where we can, you know, fix things in a coordinated fashion as a board. And this is, you know, where, as a governance team. And, and I hope, you know, I'm adding value. But, you know, that's the reason why how I got into this space was more so because of the children in this county. And I see there's a plenty of opportunity to get us to where we need to be for our kids.
All righty, well, thank you all. Thank you both so much. And, you know, thank you for your bravery, you know, to, you know, want to serve and, you know, to make a difference. Now, you mentioned diversity. Well, you know, disparities and discipline. And we do have one question, you know, concerning that. And the question is, and I'll start with you, Ms. Watkins, in what ways can the Board of Education help to solve the disparities in discipline between Black and white students?
So we have, as a board, and, you know, maybe I'll, I'll go ahead. And if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and give another high-level introduction in case folks forgot. As a, as a board, our fundamental role is to implement policy. Well, I'm sorry. The fundamental role of a local school superintendent is to implement policy. For us, we shall establish policy for the local school system, okay? And with a constant focus on student achievement. So we do that together as a board and a governance team. And I'm prefacing this, you know, as a board, plus governance team equals a superintendent together. The reason why I bring the superintendent in that is because policy is supposed to be high level, okay? So as we look at our policies, it's a high-level requirements form saying, you know, wait, how do I say this? Our school should be, I'm just going to use a phrase, our school should be a caring, nurturing environment for our children, okay? And should be able to provide, you know, you know, you know, you know, drive in an equitable way to ensure our children's, you know, our, our students achieve in this environment. I don't know. But it's, it's high level enough, because when you work as a governance team, so as a Board Member, you establish a policy, right? But you also include your superintendent, because you want to work as a governance team, because your policy also comes at a cost, right? And they know the system and how it operates, school supposedly. They suppose, they are supposed to know the system and how it's operating today to drive, you know, to drive the policy, to make sure they meet the requirements we've set for them, right? That comes at a cost. That's a funding thing. Revenue, what is our revenue stream looking like? How much is it going to cost to get there, right? And disparities in discipline, it runs underneath the umbrella of equity, okay? There's going to be an investment, especially in those schools that are experiencing a lot of these disparities. It could be a lot of training invested in it, right? Training for our teachers, our administrative staff, all of those things. And we have to listen to our superintendent to find out, you know, and each school is different. Each school is different. Not every school is going through, you know, what, you know, some school, like what my children's schools going through. I can only speak, you know, from my experience, right? And, and, you know, I hear from other parents, they happen to be in same schools. But this is, you know, they may not be experiencing the same thing. So our superintendent has to really look at that and, you know, help to give us feedback when we do establish these policies to see if we can be in those constraints. Class sizes, you see, you see why disparity in discipline, you know, class sizes also impact that, right? And as we work through this, and we work through our strategic plan, and we work through our understanding of what policies are impact, what policies that we have control over today have impact on disparities of discipline and prioritize discipline disparity, prioritize it. And it's probably going to be lumped under the realm of equity, because it is something where, you know, Dr. Therese, you know, she's given good examples about that, you know, not every shoe fits. And I'm probably saying, but, you know, every child has, you know, you have to try to cater to the student's individual needs, right? And the way we do that is by ensuring, at least this is my opinion, by ensuring we support our school system by establishing policies that will allow them to, that will allow them to be able to service our kids properly. And also ensure, because the main thing we do is the budget, that's approving that budget. That budget is looking equitable enough, given what we have today and understanding what our constraints are, and working through that. Like the strategic waiver has been a very hot topic. That strategic waiver probably, I don't know, I don't have any evidence, but it probably contributed to why we have so many distribut, disparities in discipline, right? It ties back to large class sizes. It ties back to certain things. But it also, because of the way our funding works, right? From the state and how they still continue to take away money. I guess we were at a wash this year, but still take away money from us. And, you know, and we may not have enough, you know, enough to, you know, support something right now that could fully let us get away from a strategic waiver, right? But those are things we have to look at. And how do we work within that to fix our situation? Because there are ways, we are motivated, and we will get there, right? It's just about clearly communicating back to you all so that you understand that we are working on this. You know, some outcomes you may see sooner than others in different schools, right? As they pilot things, you know, or, you know, and, and do different, you know, do different things in each school. But one of the ways is by, you know, ensuring that we have policies that support our superintendent so that we, so that they can be successful in, you know, meeting those requirements so that we can get to smaller class sizes, allow for training, allow for all of these things that will help support our teachers so that we can reduce the disparities in discipline.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Watkins. Dr. Therese, would you like to answer this question? The same question, in what ways do you feel that the Board of Education can help to solve the disparities in discipline between Black and white students?
Sure. I first want to say that as a School Board Member, we all work together as a complete governance team, which includes a superintendent, to ensure we have policies in place that drive results related to academic achievement and social emotional learning. And that also includes policies related to discipline. Our School Board are now working through our discipline policies, and we are starting with our Code of Conduct. The Code of Conduct is the, one of the largest, most comprehensive policies in, of all of our policies related to discipline. So certainly, as policymakers, it is important for us to, to work together to ensure that our policies are reflective of the times. We are consistently looking at where our gaps are. And as you've seen in some of our working sessions at our Board meetings, gaps have been identified and presented to us as a Board and to the community members as well. And, and obviously, we see that, you know, Black and Brown students receive disparate treatment in, related to discipline. We see also impacts around other dimensions of diversity. For example, children with special needs or children who speak, you know, English is a different language. So there are, there are different dimensions of diversity. They also impact discipline. But certainly, we've seen in the data that we have to address the disparities related to Black and Brown children receiving different treatment in our discipline. So some of the things that I would, I would suggest for, one, our community members, for our Board Members and our, and in particular, our parents and our students to really understand, you know, one, what the, what the Board can do. Advocate your, advocate for your child as best as you can. Two, Board Members, provide feedback to the school system, either the principal, the teacher, the superintendent, and really do what you can as a parent to advocate. Because one of the things that we've seen and we know, when a parent or a caregiver advocates for their child, they have a different experience. So that's the first thing I wanna say for our community members is, if you don't know how to advocate, ask someone to help you learn how to advocate. Um, do research on advocacy ki- key skills for my, for my children. Um, or, um, and, and so I would say that's the first thing. Um, the other thing in terms of um what our board continues to work on is looking at um our um discipline data, uh, looking at our policies and trying to understand how can we revise these policies. And some of them is really, um, you know, focused on uh eliminating the discipline uh disparities by um looking at training. And training can include um restorative practices, training, training can include implicit bias training. A training can include um um ways and how we can uh manage conflict in the classroom and manage discipline in the classroom. Um, it's, it's very, very important that when we make uh overall policy changes, um, for example, class sizes, we know class sizes impact discipline, but not just discipline, class, class size impacts on the academic achievement as well. Class sizes impact the stress level and workload of our teachers. So we have to look at it as, from a holistic perspective that, you know, eliminating class sizes uh absolutely solves for other things as well. So, so, so we know when we do that, that, that's a, 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 a foundation, right? But we have to also understand that we still have the same teachers in the classroom and we still have some issues that still need to be addressed. And training can solve that. Um, sometimes, you know, implicit bias is exactly that. It's implicit. We don't understand how our decisions and our experiences, um, our, our perceptions um, and how stereotypes impact how we manage our classroom and how we deal with situations. So it's very important for our teachers and our administrators to be consciously aware of how um they may perceive a child. And because of who they are, because of that background and experiences and what they look like, sometimes that can impact how they engage with that student. And so that's why, um, not just eliminating class sizes, but also looking at um, um, the training port element of that. The other thing we need to focus on as well is um, is, is really addressing empathy. Like, our children are experiencing bullying in the classrooms. Um, our teachers are, are overwhelmed. Um, our, a lot of students have, have experienced a lot the past three years um as we've operated as best as we could during this uh climate of, 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 during the pandemic. And, and, and there's just stress, there's frustration, there's, there's so much going on. And it's so important for us to really look at discipline from a way that is focused on empathy. When we think about teaching our teachers about empathy and our students about empathy and they mo- and we model it as well, um, that'll help reduce the bullying. That'll help un- for teachers to understand, I want to put myself in the, in, in the place of this child. Let me experience or try my best to experience how they may feel. And then maybe their decisions will be different when a situation arises, when a fight happens in the classroom, when a um, when, when, when there's an argument or whatever, they can kind of figure out a way on how they can be um preventative as well as how they can manage um the situation as it happens, as well as how they can help resolve the situation. So empathy is critically important. And empathy is also the foundation of looking at um, um, and managing a classroom from a culturally relevant perspective. So when we have a culturally res- uh responsive uh way in how we engage our students in our classroom, how we teach and how we manage behavior, then we also um, um, can help uh curb some of the discipline issues uh because uh we want to empathetic to the student. Um, and we're putting ourselves in the lives and in the shoes of that particular student. And we're also looking at different uh cultural nuances that if you speak loudly, I won't think you're being offensive to me, right?
Yeah.
I understand some people, they speak loudly. Some people use their hands and they move their head and they, that, a teacher may look at that and say, oh, well, they're being disrespectful because they're talking like this and they're moving their hands and, but for some people and some cultures, that could be something that's very normal, uh, right? So, so, but, but, but when you understand different cultures or, or you understand the home environment of the student, if you, when you, you, the more you get to know your children, which also is part of class sizes, right? Cause hard when you have large class sizes, not to get to know them, right? But when you have smaller class sizes, when you get to know your children, when you have empathy around who they are, putting yourself in their shoes, and when you understand and has culturally uh cultural competence related to how you manage that, that, that is going to work wonders in the classroom um and, and help uh us to reduce discipline. But one thing I must say is um to, to, to end this part of the, of the question is restorative justice. Restorative justice is an important aspect around how do we prevent discipline issues, right, in the future? And how do we manage them right now? If there is a fight, if there is bullying and two students are working or, or have, they have a conflict, then instead of sending the child to um a, I, I, in-school suspension, we can still separate them and put them in a space where there's ice in, in-school suspension. But the in-school suspension is not um where they're just sitting there and there's a teacher monitoring there doing classwork. What it is, is it's an opportunity for the students to use that time to really understand the impact of what they, the harm they have caused. Children, the bullying is not, should not be tolerated. That is absolutely, that is, that is hate, that is unempathetic and the bullying from um, from children, uh, from adults, whatever, it is, it should not be tolerated. And so what do we need to do? Discipline means teach. So we have a punitive system right now. And what we need to do is look at how do we transform a punitive system to a discipline, um, to a discipline system, but discipline means teach, right? So that behaviors can stop. And so when the restorative justice process is, let's teach them the harm they cause. Let's tell them like, look, look at the pain you caused by fighting this other student. Look at the pain you caused by bullying this student. Look at this. Do you wanna be like this? Let me help you be better. Let me help you do better. And then there's a conversation, if possible, for the, for the students to then work together to try to um, um, help one another uh uh understand empathy and also um, um, for them for, to give the opportunity for the person who participated in the violent behavior to apologize and to apologize with authenticity. And in that apology, also to get help on how they can make sure that whatever the root cause of the issue is, that it's solved, that they're doing is what they can, as best as they can to not repeat the same behaviors. And what we're seeing oftentimes in discipline is the repeated behavior. So we have to look at the root cause of the behavior, address it from a restorative practice, be really innovative in how we're doing that, and, and that stops the behavior. Because these children are going to be citizens, right, in our community? And if we don't address it now, it could get worse. And so I just say, let's lead with love. Let's lead with empathy and let's see our children, we truly see our children. And they know that they are loved and they know that they can get the help that they need, then our discipline rates will be reduced. And if, 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 if they don't have the family's support or um, uh, um, or the environment that is helpful for them, let's figure out how we can work with community members to help um with wraparound services, right? Let's get proxies and, let's get proxies. Some of our students need advocates. When they go to tribunals, when they're, when they're, um, you know, uh, en- engaging in the process of discipline, we wanna pu- we wanna plug the school to prison pipeline, right? We don't want the pipeline to, to continue. We want to dismantle it. And in order to dismantle the school to prison pipeline, we have to look at all the resources available to our students, and that includes proxies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm staying on the subject since uh Karen Watkins brought up um the superintendent's role. Um, I guess Karen says, Dr. Theresa is the last one. Uh, can you explain the difference between what the superintendent does and what the school board does? Cause I think sometimes the community thinks you all do what the superintendent does and vice versa. So can, can you give a, a breakdown of the difference between the two roles?
Sure, and I'll just read from the law. It's um, it's just for your reference, the twenty ten Georgia Code, uh, Title Twenty, Educating, Education, Chapter Two, um, and um Article Three. So, eh, so the fundament- the fundamental role of a local Board of Education shall be to establish policy for the local school system with the focus on student achievement. Okay? And then the fundamental role of a local school superintendent shall be to implement the policy established by the local board. So we establish he, the superintendent implements. So a lot of the things with the implementation, you know, a lot of things, you know, Dr. Theresa identified there, you know, those are things he's gonna take, you know, he takes into consideration when he's, you know, working through our, you know, that's taken consideration. He's, he would be probably looking at those types of, um, um, Dr. Watson probably be looking at those types of measures, right? Restorative practices, all those things, you know, so that he can maybe implement to help our school sys-, you know, to help our students with reference to disparity, right? Um, to help, you know, um mitigate, you know, the risk of having, you know, a despair, disparity and um with discipline. Um, primarily um to our black children, mainly boys. Um, those are the ones who have the hot, as of today, based off of what I'm seeing, you know, facts and data, they don't lie. Um, you know, that's where, you know, we're seeing a lot of disparity in discipline, okay? Um, so leveraging that, the superintendent, so you think we have the policy, it's a high level portion of um, is a document that the superintendent would reference, right, that we establish with some feedback from not only our community members, but also those who have to implement the policy, okay? So there's an implementation component, that's the superintendent, because now it comes at a cost. I know this is the boring stuff, but this is what it is. Um, it's gonna come at a cost. You have to figure out his policy, can we do this policy, meet the requirements? How much does it cost us? And how much will it change our system over time, right? And how, how, how are we going to enact this to meet the requirements? So um, so implementation, school board member, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, so superintendent, policy establishment is a school board member. And then I do also um want to say, you know, and this is just piggybacking off of Dr. Theresa here, um, and just reminding everyone, we work as a board. Um, no individual, you know, local Board of Education members should work together um with the entire local Board of Education and shall not have authority as independent elected officials, but shall only be authorized to take official action as members of the board, which you did a very good job of explaining in your very early um presentation. But we make a decision as a board, what comes out of it is a board decision. It's not, you know, um, a yay or nay thing, it's a board decision, you know? Um, this is what it is and we support the decision as a board. And so um, even with, um, and with that too disparities in discipline and um, um, understanding that, that, you know, everything that Dr. Theresa, Chairperson Dr. Theresa stated, um, you know, is true, yes, we have to, um, you know, work together as, as community members, do all of those things, but also work with our school system. Because a lot of things, and working with some of the parents, um, I've had a lot of parents reach out to me, um, particularly in my district, okay? They have reached out to me about discipline issues, um, you know, because they know what my experiences were, they know, you know, what, and they, and they reach out to me. We, we should all as a community try to help them to find that advocacy. But not all parents, no, not all parents are gonna be watching this right now. A lot of things and what I learned from my advocacy training was, um, it's word of mouth. All group sessions, this is where you, you know, if you know someone with a child in the school system, right? And, you know, just talk to them about, oh, how's it going here? Da, 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 da. Did that, if that word of mouth starts trickling and you tell them to talk to others, you tell them to do, this is, this is, you know, I'm, you know, I'm taking, you know, this year out and I've, I've been trying to do those and having small group sessions, really talking to our parents and children, our students and our students. Um, you know, they've come to me, I'm talking to them, they introduced me to the other student, but it is word of mouth, right? Not everyone can make one individual event, and that's the God honest truth. Sometimes you have to have small group sessions and you get those small group sessions with a lot of, you know, individuals that do like to share the word of mouth and should, and spread the good word, right? And that actually helps and, and one way, you know, you know, with Gwinnett and W A C P, this is one vehicle. This is one vehicle, sharing this, when you have that contact with a parent in the school system, share this with them or just have a conversation and say, listen, you haven't any issues? I know who you, we can send you to, right? You can send us to the, you know, board member, the board member will get you to the right place. It'll start following and trickling down to whoever it needs to get to. And so it's, you know, it, it's, it, you know, like sometimes the open, um, you know, an open forum is great, but not everyone's able to attend at a certain time. And you get it, look at Saturday, beautiful Saturday morning, right? People are out jogging right now, doing stuff or whatever because they need a break, right?
Yes.
But the thing is, this is important. What you are spreading right now is extremely important. So if you can, and I'll help with this, when you guys do your sessions, I actually wind up sharing them with our parents. Listen to this.
Yes.
What happens, right? This is some take, takes, what do you get out of that? What do you take away from this, right? So that's where, you know, not only, if you don't have to have large crowds for, but you can help to influence in small groups i- by individual at some point with six degrees of separation. It's gonna touch and people become more informed. And also remember, our school system does have nonprofits and um, so it doesn't necessarily have to come from us. We just have to know to let our school system know that our parent may need some outside help, right? They may need it, you know, which have nonprofits like Mosaic, Preface, you know, from, from, from literacy to sexual harassment, to whatever it is, whatever trauma your um child has gone through. They go in that N double A C P, right? You have partnerships with um, uh, the, the school system, right? And you lead them to the school system or even a board member so that they can help identify those partnerships so that they can leverage those other resources, even like yourself, to help them through whatever it is they're going through. Um, so, you know, those are, you know, some things. I hope I answered your question. Um, Mr. Paul?
Absolutely, absolutely. We would like to take a question from the, um, you know, from the, um, you know, chat. And so one question came from Rebecca Mitchell. And, you know, her question, you know, I guess is two-part, but she says, I'd love to know what the school board members are most proud of in their work on the school board in the past year dealing with pandemic in such a large school system. And then she says, and maybe what are the most important strengths folks who run for this job should bring to the table? Well, let's start with the first one. She'd love to know what the school board members are most proud of in their work on the school boards in the past year while dealing with the pandemic in such a large school system. And we'll start with you, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to answer this question. Um, I first wanted to um kind of go back to the question that was asked originally about um the, the superintendent and the school board. Um, and um, one of the uh points of conversation we had during our working session meetings, which typically are about two o'clock, um, and, and I encourage our community members, um, our leaders, um, anyone who's interested in running for school board, please watch our working sessions. The working sessions are, um, community members cannot and speak at those working sessions um, because we have to have, because of the Open Meetings Act, we have to have um our meetings in public. And so these meetings are us learning, asking questions, trying to figure it out as board members, right? They're not perfect meetings where you'll see us as perfect individuals. What you will see is discussions, what you'll see is us asking questions to understand, right? So it's important um for people to understand that the work of the board is really about the what. And we discussed this in our uh last working session and, and the what is really policies. Policies, as you see now, some of our policies include specific things that are related to discipline. We can create policies um related to restorative justice as we update the, the, the code of conduct policy. We can create policies um that's related to um, um, uh, you know, eh, equity. And we already have an equity policy, we have um opportunities to, to look at our equity policy and update that, uh, which we plan to do on our schedule. Um, but, but even that, there are opportunities for us to look at the what. And then the school system, Superintendent Dr. Watts and his team can then look at how do we implement the policies made um by our school board. But remember, the school board members are part of the governance But remember, the school board members are part of the governance team, which includes Dr. Watts. Dr. Watts is the operations, operations helps us also write policy, right? So it's, it's really this collaboration with, uh, the school system and the board working together to create policy, critical point about policymaking. It also, um, as representatives of our community. One school board member, of course, we were elected by our districts, right? Um, but at the same time, when we are on the board, we represent all of our students, right? And one board member cannot make a decision alone. The board members, um, specifically work together to create policy, to vote on policy and, and, and really to vote on how we um, would like to, um, ensure that our school system is following, um, the policies in a way that, um, can impact student achievement and, and, and the behavior, um, and social emotional success of our students. Um, so I wanted to just make a, a, a point about, um, you know, really, as we are creating policies, uh, um, as board members, we represent the people. Because we represent the people, it is important to us, and I have engaged with teachers, I have sessions with teachers, I have sessions with parents, I have session with community members. It's, I, I'm very, I want to ensure that the diversity of the groups that I meet with, um, include um, gender diversity, racial diversity, multicultural diversity, lingual diversity, and, and, and parents, teachers, students, community advocates, and I, I meet with them, I engage with them, people reach out to me, and I think all of this is so important. Because, because as we get feedback from the people, that's how we know how to advocate and do better in our jobs, and we can advocate for policies that, um, that our community members would like to, to see because they have been directly impacted by our policies. My child is also in GCPS public school, and I also understand the impact that he has as a black male in the school system. And, and, um, and, and I, um, it's not just about my child, this is about every single child, right? In the school system, but it's so important for community members to know that even if you can't attend one of these sessions, if, you know, some of the sessions are recorded, some of them aren't recorded, some of them in person, some of them are virtual. But there are so many ways to provide feedback to your board members that can impact change, that your voice matters. We have thought exchange, we have board, a board phone numbers, we have board email addresses, we have, uh, um, the, the public comment at our school board meetings, we have events going on in the community, we have, there are so many, uh, different avenues for people to engage with the board members to impact policy. So the power is truly in the people, so you all have the power to provide us with feedback so that we can appropriately advocate. So one of the things to answer, uh, Dr. Mitchell's question is, what are you most proud of, um, as, as a board member uh, managing, um, during the pandemic? Well, one thing I must say is, um, you know, our focus has really been on, um, you know, making sure that, if, as our schools are open, that we are providing safe environment for our children. And, and, and safety is, is, uh, certainly paramount, and that has been, um, evidence, and even in the, the, the lower rates with, um, you know, our mask mandates in schools and ensuring that, um, that the safety was, uh, uh, when the, uh, when the rates were very high, right, the contact rates were very high, and that we made sure that everyone was safe, so we had mitigation strategies in place. Um, of course, uh, uh, that's more of an operational thing, but I'm very proud of being able to support the work of our superintendent and our school system in the, in, in the, in the fact that we did the best we could to keep our students safe, and we will continue to do that. Um, the other thing is, you know, um, hiring a, a, a superintendent, um, 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 a, an equity minded, uh, a person with a track record of, of, of experience in, in this work, um, and just continuing the work, um, and also looking at ways on how we can continuously improve our system and move it in a direction that is relevant, and we have Learning 2025 now that is an amazing opportunity for our school system now to really meet the needs of our students in a future, and, and look at the future of how we can make sure that they are competitive. So, I'm, 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 um, Learning 25 addresses, you know, empathy, equity, and academic excellence. Um, um, I'm, I'm very proud of the work we've done as a school board, as a team, um, just really learning and growing together, because it was rocky in the beginning for sure, just kind of meeting people, uh, uh, learning the system and, you know, trying to get, get our, um, you know, more understanding on how we can be effective. So, um, I do like that, um, we've, um, we, we know how to, how to work together as a team to, to achieve academic excellence and, and, um, for our students. Um, I'm also very proud of the work we're doing right now around our policies, um, we are policymakers. And I'm very proud of, of the schedule and the work that we're kind of, you know, focusing on and, and, and making sure that that's, that's happening. Um, I always say that we have a lot of, we've, we've done some great things, but we have a lot of, um, opportunities also. And so I'm looking forward to continuously, uh, looking at the opportunities we have to ensure that each and every child has what they need to be successful. And, um, when, and finally, just to conclude on this statement, uh, when we talk about equity, and I, I wanna just kind of make sure people understand this, when we talk about equity, it doesn't mean that we're taking away anything from any group of people. Equity basically means that, um, you know, picture a race, we're all at the starting line, right? And we're getting ready to run this race. Um, if you wear a size eight shoe, and I give you a size six shoe, and you try to run that race, it's going to be quite difficult for you to run that race, right? Because your feet will be hurting. If the next runner has a size eight shoe and they wear a size eight shoe, they're comfortable. They will run that race and they will run it with much, um, uh, with, with ease. If you wear a size, uh, um, you know, six shoe and I give you a size ten, how are you gonna run the race, it'll flip and flop, and you can't even run the race because the shoe is too big, it doesn't fit. So it's important that as we're all at the starting line of this race, that if you wear a size six shoe, you get a size six, you wear a size eight, you get a size eight, you wear a size ten shoe, you get a size ten shoe. And then, uh, our shoes fit perfectly so that we can run the race and we can be successful in that race, so we all have the opportunity to be successful because we have the access, because we have the information, and because we have the right tools, resources, and support systems so that we can run the race and, and have the opportunity to achieve success however we define that success.
Thank you so much, um, Dr. Watkins, and I, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson, and, um, Ms. Watkins, I'm gonna ask you the next question, and, um, it says, what are the most important strengths folks who run for the job, you know, I guess for the school board of education should bring to the table to help make our board run effectively to help the next students?
Um, from my own personal point of view, um, if I were, you know, constituent right now and I was trying to vote, someone who, um, is there to serve the children. That's their main goal, they're serving the children, no other agenda, no nothing, just serving the children. Um, remember, you know, you can run as a school board member at the age of eighteen, you know, I think you gotta be eighteen and, um, you know, independent, whatever, no, no criminal backgrounds, none of those things, and they, and they do that because, um, you are representing your community. If so, if you want to, you know, a successful school board member will represent the community at large, which is, you know, for this instance, is Gwinnett County Public Schools, right? And their main focus is, just like what the law says, is the student, right? And it's ensuring that they achieve, so all those factors that would affect their achievement, addressing all those factors that would affect their achievement via the mechanism of establishing policy and supporting our superintendent to implement the policy in whatever way we can, which is, you know, our second main thing we do is approving the budget in a timely manner. So, that's, you know, so that's, helps to support the superintendent, right? So that he, that, that, that superintendent could, but for me, it, it's difficult if, if, you know, um, if your heart isn't there, if you're there to show something or do whatever it is, it, you know, it, it doesn't stop, it could be a mother, you know, with children system that, that, you know, they may be, you know, they, they may have more of a, um, blue collar job, you know, but they are so staunch and advocate in making sure that the children, um, you know, are served properly. They will be successful, they'll be successful if they have that mindset. And, um, I think we have such a great diverse board, um, I, you know, right now, right? And they are, um, you know, we all have, in our different ways, serve the children the way we can and the best way that we can, right? I think our hearts are in the right place, right? To, as, right now, as I'm seeing, you know, based on our work sessions, I think our hearts are in the right place because we are all thinking the primary focus in thought is the student, that child that attends our school system. So, for me personally, I believe it needs to be a community member that cares about our child's education and wants to do right by them and will work very hard to do right by them.
Thank you, I'd like to also answer that question as well, I think, I think, um, you know, i- i- it, it is important for us to understand how our biases impact our decisions, right? I have a doctorate degree in education, so for me, I do have a bias towards educators, educators. Um, um, and I, I recognize that, and so I have to like be conscious about, okay, you know, what are the skills and qualifications that are required for this job? Really, it, they're, they're eighteen years old, no criminal, I mean, it's, you know, it's really a community member, right? Um, um, but the willingness to serve children and to ensure the academic achievement and social emotional success of our children, I think, is critical. But, I'm, I must say, for me, my personal perspective is we do have a very diverse board. Um, there is, there's, there is a, uh, an opportunity for us to have, um, other educators on the board as well. And so, um, I, I love, uh, you know, again, I'm, I'm biased in this way because of my education and, you know, experience and, 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 uh, and, and then my own doctorate degree in the space is that, you know, having, you know, teachers on the board is, is, uh, can add to, um, I don't think we have to have all teachers, but I do think the voices of, for diversity um, is very important, um, and so, and, and right now we have a diverse board, um, you know, uh, teachers on the board, I think could, it, it, it could definitely enhance the work that, that we're doing and the advocacy that's, that's needed, uh, related to, 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 to our teachers. Um, I think the other thing we need on the board is, we, we've gone through so much, we have gone through so much, it takes someone with thick skin, and it takes someone who is courageous, because this work is not easy, it's not easy. And, and if you can't take a stand now when you're running and be strong and thick, if you can't do it now, how are you gonna fight for the children? How are you gonna advocate for the children if you, if you are hiding and if you were, you know, uh, you know, not uh, courageous and, and even in the process of, of trying to be a board member, and so, you know, my, um, perspective is, we need, uh, board members who, who have a love for children and who certainly are, are dedicated. Um, no political agendas, um, no agendas for, uh, that are, uh, you know, personally motivated around their stuff, but really focused on how do we make a difference in the lives of our children that can impact our community? And how, how do we do that? And really looking at, uh, that process in a way that, um, you know, I, I, we're supporting our teachers, our superintendent, and we're policymakers, and understanding the role. So, one thing I would say is, whoever does ultimately get elected as new members of our school board to just learn as much as you can before you start the role. Um, and I will support that, um, as best as I can, I, I, and I'm allowed to, I will support that as well. But I do think it's important to get as much learning and education around it, because when we were running, we didn't have a lot of the information around what to do and how to do things, and you know, so we kind of had to learn as we went along. But I would e- encourage, um, you know, our, our candidates to understand that you can, you know, campaign on all these things, but really, you can't do, um, much around the operations and, and of, of the school system, but you can, um, influence through policy. So really focusing on from an upper level perspective, how can I help shape policy to drive the, uh, the school system in a way that can impact the lives of, of, of the children, so. Thank you for that question, uh, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
All right, we, we do got another question in the chat, and we're gonna ask since we only got maybe a little about twenty minutes left in the program to keep the answers a little tight, just so we can get all these questions in, so we got, uh, Cassandra uh, Greer, she said, who controls the hiring of teachers and administration? Is there any requirement to ensure it is in line with the student population? Uh, Dr. Watson, Karen Watkins, you can go ahead, since Dr. Therese spoke on the previous one.
Okay, so we approve the hiring of teachers and administration. Um, however, it's based off of the superintendent's recommendation. The hope is, um, that there are, you know, and, and, you know, it, the recommendation that we know, it should align with laws of hiring, fair practices, all of those things, things that we address with the superintendent, um, very, very early on. Um, and those, you know, and, and whatever mechanisms, you know, are, you know, are in place that are, you know, keeps us, you know, within the laws. Um, but the, at, today, the recommendation does come from the superintendent, and we approve the hiring, uh, the hiring of, based off of that recommendation the superintendent has to us, so that's as of today. And as far as requirements, um, the, I, I can't answer, you know, this would be a good question for, um, Dr. Batiste, right, um, she is with our system about, is there any requirements to ensure the requirement component, okay? Because, you know, remember, there's, there, we have our own, you know, HR has their, you know, own, the following policies and procedures so that they align with the, um, you know, laws for fair hiring practices and things of that nature. So, um, in that instance, we do have Dr. Therese, this is something I could follow up on, um, to help ensure this align with the student population, based on what I have seen, what I have seen and personally experienced. Um, the, you know, there was an exercise, you know, at least one of the schools within my district where they hired a principal and they got feedback from the parents, as well as the teachers, and went through the entire exercise, so. Uh, but that was, you know, it, you know, in my district, you know, I, I, I'm, I don't know if there is any requirement. So unfortunately today, I don't know if there is a requirement to ensure it is in line with the student population. I, I hope it is, um, but I don't know if there is a requirement stated.
Right, and I can also follow up on that as well, um, re- related to the requirement. Um, we ideally, uh, would like our student population, um, and our teacher population to match. That is something that is, uh, about, uh, representation. And, and I, and I think, um, as you've seen in some of our working sessions, we've had robust conversations related to recruitment um, of our teachers who speak English, uh, who speaks, uh, Spanish and other things. So, um, it's important for us to, as, as best as we can, when we see that there is a need and we need it, um, our, the teacher population to reflect that need, then we're doing the, what we can, um, from a recruitment perspective to do that. As board members, we've had conversations at our working sessions, um, about, uh, the representation. And, um, um, and, and, and we've, we've made some great strides, Dr. Batiste and her team, the system have, uh, recruited, um, teachers who, who speak other languages, uh, most of them is, uh, Spanish, uh, as, as, as a first language, and, and, um, and these teachers are now adding value to our system, and we're hoping to continue our efforts around that, on bilingual or multilingual recruitment. Um, we're looking at, uh, black male teachers as something that we talked about, and we know that there's a gap, so there's opportunity for that, right? So that representation piece is really important, the syst- as board members, we've had conversations and advocacy and asked questions as the data has been presented to us at our working sessions. But the system is going to have to figure out how we do that, how do we, uh, uh, ensure the representation? That, it, um, we've, we've done some things, a low hanging fruit, like recruitment, getting a pipeline, we have a pipeline where we're looking at our student population. And we have a program that as we look at our student population, how can we bring you back into the system to be a teacher, right? So, so naturally, we have this pool of candidates that are the students. If we can just get more students from our system to then go back into the system, right, to become teachers, administrators, leaders, then the, over time, we'll start to see this, this shift around representation and ma- making sure that there is a, 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 a match there. Um, then, uh, then the, the other thing is, um, was about the, uh, hiring of teachers and administrators. To be honest with y'all, we don't know, I don't even know who they're hiring, I don't know the names of the people, I don't know who they are, I don't- To be honest with y'all, we don't know, I don't even know who they're hiring. I don't know the names of the people. I don't know who they are. I don't know their backgrounds. We don't know them. We don't know them. And so, um, but as board, as board members, um, we, we have to rely on the school system that, um, uh, as they go through the process that they're following the laws. Um, and that they're doing the right thing and making the, the, the right decisions to hire the best, most qualified candidate for the role. And so when the information is presented to us, we don't vote on individual people. We vote on all of the people who are in this packet and all of these names. And we honestly, we don't know them. We don't know who they are. We can't go back and be like, oh, let me talk to you. We're not a part of the interview process. We're not part of the recruitment process. We're not part of, uh, the process of even, um, uh, even participating in the final interview. Like it's just, we're not, that is one hundred percent the system. We have no authority, no influence, no impact around the authority of the system, which is hiring, firing, um, promoting teachers, administrators, leaders, none. So just know, I know community members have held us accountable and they've asked us how, how is this? Or, or I'm trying to understand, you know, how we're, how the hiring is happening and why this person was fired or why this person was hired. We are not in control of that. If we say no to one person, we're saying no to all of them. We can't do that. Like this is just, uh, you know, it's, 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 um, we have opportunities, however. Cause I don't want to make excuses and not say that we don't have opportunities. We have opportunities to do better in this space from a policy perspective. And I think we, we have opportunities to have conversation around how we can do that as board members and our role as board members. Um, in terms of ensuring that, um, this process, uh, does provide us with a, a, a bit more transparency, um, and, and how, how, how can that happen differently? And that's, we have to work with the school system and, and, and our board and maybe some other people to help us understand how we can be more effective around this process. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure about, um, you know, about how we can get involved directly because we really, we're not in operations, but from policy perspective, um, there may be some opportunities there.
And I think, um, just to, I think also just understanding what is happening today. And maybe we could get you all like, um, understanding of what is the process today? So that we can figure out where those opportunities are. Cause if you don't fully understand the process, you're not gonna be able to figure out what opportunities need to improve. So maybe we could get you a high level summary of our process today for the hiring and, um, you know, hiring, firing, blah, 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 right? Of our, you know, and then, you know, and, and how it all works with the representation so that we can work effectively as a community. And even, you know, understand, but if you don't understand the process today, it's not gonna, we won't be effective. So I, we up, I'll put, we can put that on our to-do list to get you what's on a high level summary.
And then I'm, I'm gonna take a couple more questions from, um, this is from our chapter, people that submitted questions in our chapter. What measures can the school board take to fix the growing class sizes? Dr. Reese, you can.
Well, one of the things we can do is we have a strategic waiver on the table and the strategic waiver says that you can go above the class sizes that the state set, that the state sets. Um, I think the class sizes are about eighteen, we can go above that. And right now we have class sizes that are over, you know, twenty-two. And you, you, uh, you heard, you know, we have people, community members telling us there are twenty-six kids in the class or more. And so, um, the strategic waiver, um, basically is one of the ways, um, but, but even without the strategic waiver, just as a, a system. Um, the system can, can decide on that. But, you know, one of the things to understand, this is so very important, is that when we, we have to look at trade-offs, right? We have to look at, when we set a budget as a school system, and school board members are one of our main jobs uh, besides academic achievement and, and social emotional success of our students, which actually is also reflected in our budget, is managing uh, passing, um, and approving a, a, a budget. And so the budget really, uh, should be aligned with our priorities. So if ever, you know, there's a saying, if ever you want to see where organization stands, look at their budget. That is so true. Look at the school system's budget and see, compare the budget, not just from last year, but from the last few years to how we, um, to the, to the new budget that, that, that will be passed, um, with our, with, with this board, um, soon. But, but when you, when you look at the budget, you'll see, um, where our priorities are. And so we also have to understand that when we reduce class sizes, there's a, there's a, there's a economic impact, there's a financial impact. And then we have to look at, what does that financial impact mean? There is, there are trade-offs, right? So if we, if we reduce our class sizes, we either change the ratio, student teacher ratio, that's still another teacher in the class. We have to hire more teachers. And then we have to look at the space requirements. Well, do we have space for more classrooms? Do we need to, you know, have, you know, how do we figure out the spacing requirement? Um, how do we figure out, um, um, making sure the environment is, is, is safe in a way and that maybe require, uh, require in, investments, um, because we need more space or, you know, hiring the teachers need more space, training the teachers is more, I'm sorry, training and hiring teachers is more, uh, uh, investment, right? So then we have to think about, okay, well, this costs, right? When we reduce our class sizes. So where do we offset those costs? So then that's the other issue we have to figure out as a board is we have to figure out, well, well, uh, you know, how are we, um, how are we doing that? And that is not an easy process. I'm really being transparent with you all in this community. It's not an easy process. But when we look at, well, what are our goals? So we always have to go back to, why are we here? Like, what is our why? And our why is, right, is the academic achievement of our students. It's reducing our discipline rates, which impact the academic achievement of our students. It's ensuring we have a safe and healthy environment so that every child belongs. Each and every single child must have a space and a place where they feel safe and they feel like they belong. And, um, and how do we do that? Class sizes are a big part of that. They're a big, that. And, and, and I dare to say that, I, I will, uh, um, be unapologetic about continuously advocating for and bravely advocating for, um, our students and our teachers, um, to be in a space where they can really take advantage of this great school system that, um, that we want to create and continue to be, uh, this futuristic, um, uh, 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 system that embraces the needs of each and every child, which is equity. Equity is embracing the needs of each and every child, right? Um, no one is left out. So how do we do that? How do we do that in North Georgia? How do we do that in South Buonnet? How do we do it? And it's figuring it out in a way that District Five students aren't always the ones who are marginalized. And then you have other districts who, you know, I, I see it, it's there, it's very apparent. So we have to figure out in our budget, we have to figure out in, even in how the class sizes are made or, or, you know, what are the differences between the clusters and is there equity amongst the clusters? And, you know, so all of these things cost money. They all cost money. And so, so, so that's, that's kind of, you know, you know, my perspective related to, to, um, you know, our class sizes is, is, you know, we are, we are, many of us are committed to reducing our class sizes. A strategic waiver is certainly one way, but we really don't even need that as, as an operate, as board members and as, as, um, you know, the governance team and even as the superintendent decides on how to do it, right? Cause we don't do the how. Um, certainly, how can we look at policy in a way that we are shaping it? But, but we also have to be responsible leaders in ensuring that we're managing our budget. And we're, we're being really strategic and smart about short term and long term related to our budget.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. We have so many questions and we, um, thank you all so much for joining us this morning and for engaging with us. Um, we want to do, we do want to wrap it up by eleven thirty AM. And so I think this may be our last question, but I would like to post it to both of you. And, you know, thank you so much for your time this morning and for all that you do. Um, but this question, um, says, um, I think I'm, look. Okay. In what ways can your constituents show their support, you know, for members of the board? And I'll start with, um, you, Ms. Watkins, and you're muted, and then we'll have, um, Dr. Johnson just send us out.
Okay, um, the ways you could show support is by engaging with us. And working with us, working with us, not against us. Um, so when I say that, um, we thankfully, whether you feel it or not, I think you have a board as a whole and a governance team, a governance team that is, um, wants to bring equity, wants to, um, you know, ensure that we have a, 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 a budget that is able to allow us to give the education our children need. Right? And we, we guide equity through policy, all these types of things. Um, but the one thing we do need, we do need from our community is your support and working with us within the ramifications that we have. Many peo-, I'm gonna use the example Dr. Treese just gave with reference to the strategic waiver. First, you know, and, and even the hiring prac-, uh, the hiring process from one of those questions there. First, we have to understand what the process is today. Then understand how can we improve, but be opening, be open, our community to be open, to want to understand the process that's in place today. From there, we could work towards seeing opportunities for improvement. If we can't, if we can't work together in that fashion, because I will tell you this, yes, we have a strategic waiver. And before I got elected to the board, that was one of my biggest pain points, well before I got elected to the board. I was so mad we had a strategic waiver, okay? Take off this board cap. I was so mad, I'm writing our elected officials because these class sizes were being over. But I had to also take a step back and understand, why did they put this strategic waiver in place? Wasn't necessarily the best thing, but we were, we were adding lots of student population, right? To the mix, right? And I think this was happening in like two thousand fifteen, to that, when it started, the stra- the strategic waiver started. So the system, because they continually, mind you, it just doesn't start with us. It starts from the system above. And this is a civics education. Y'all need to talk to your state superintendent and your governor and Senator Ralston, the chair. Because they're the ones with this QBE. They are the ones who are taking away monies from our public school system. They're also the ones that have our vouchers, which do not help us at all. They help private school systems. I'm a public school board member, not a private school board member. I will advocate till the days because we can't do nothing without money. Remember the two top things we do? Policy and money. Okay? So where's that money coming from? And how are we going to make sure enough is being transferred to that classroom? That all filters down into what is, what we consider equitable. And everything leads to the child in the classroom. Everything should be leading, the most money should be leading to the child in the classroom. And making sure that they have the best at, uh, student achieving environment they can have, right? So, you know, uh, if, if we don't understand the process, uh, you know, we get criticism about, um, you know, the strategic waiver. But right now it's in place. So how do we work with that within its limitations? Because the thing is, we could cut off that strategic, make a decision and say, oh, you know, the board says, oh, we don't want a strategic waiver no more. But that's gonna tackle into our money. So what do we do? We find creative ways to work within what we have, right? To work towards driving that equity to our children that where it hits them the best, what place is in the classroom. So, you know, that's lowering the class size, hiring more teachers costs money, training more teachers costs money. Figuring out all of these other things, putting in programs in place, doing all these great things that I think we as a board governance team and, you know, with, you know, the expertise of our operations department have found and hopefully pleasant surprises will be out there for y'all, have found ways to budget while monies are being taken away from us to get out of the class size slump we're in right now. So our, we are figuring out creative ways to get out. I'm very proud of our school system right now. Because they are trying to, you know, make recommendations to give the monies to these kids in the classroom. Given the state that we're in. So if we're gonna talk about civics and everything, and this is a program about that, talk to Speaker Ralston about why are you allowing for bills like vouchers taking away from our children's mouths? When ninety percent of the children in Georgia, um, are, you know, need a public education or participate in public education, but you're giving it to vouchers. Tell us why you continue to take away monies from Buonnet County Public Schools. And work with a QBE formula that does not allow us to help ensure that mo- all this money goes to our students in the classroom. Now it impacts our teachers, it impacts everyone. Money impacts. And these are two things we do, policy and money. So, you know, even taking another step further, challenge your elected officials. And yes, we have the power. You could gerrymander us all day long. You could do all of these things all day long. But ninety percent of them kids are, you're attending public school, first local school board, ninety percent of these kids are attending public school. And these kids need the money school. Those parents, regardless of what economic stature they're in, they are a taxpayer in our, and a citizen in our county. And their children deserve the best education that they have. So if you can, if you are active in the community, please work with us, not against us. Don't continue to fault, uh, or continue to, um, think about what is happening in the past. Let us keep moving forward and continue and to focus on what we can do as a team for the future. Because now we're past advocate, advocating. We are past. We are at implementation mode. We are at, what, what did Red Man say? Time for some action. That's where we at now. So this is where we are at now. We have to be actionable. Work with our, our governance team, you working with us in our governance team, so that we can get the best education for all of our children. And thank you for letting me sit on my soapbox. It was, you know, tearing me up. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. And Dr. Johnson, please.
Yes, I know we have about, um, a few minutes left.
Yes.
Um, but I, the, the, the first thing I want to say is, you know, the question was about, uh, related to community and how the community can support us. Um, one of the things that we discussed, uh, or, or something that was presented was understanding the process. It is so important for our community members to understand the process. However, we also know that because of language barriers, because of, uh, cultural differences, because of, um, just other, for, for, for other reasons, everyone, they just don't know the process. They, um, they don't know how to access the information, or maybe, um, there's some other barriers in place. Um, but what our communities absolutely do know, they know the impact of our policies. They know the impact of our processes and our procedures. And they know that, and then they share with us that impact, right? And so, and so, so, so certainly important for everyone, even people running for school board, to understand process, um, understand roles and responsibilities, um, understand the governance structure and the team and how change is, is implemented. Um, but as, as elected officials, advocacy is never ending. That is the work of, of, of people who are always, uh, representing the people. Is continuous advocacy, uh, for their needs. Um, and as policymakers, that's how we drive change. We drive change through our policies. And if our policies aren't working, we have to go back and we have to have the courage to, uh, uh, take accountability for our, um, you know, the impact of our policies, right? And, and say if it's not working, if the impact did not match the intent, then we have to go back and look at our policies and figure out how we can do that. But our policies is our action. I will vote on our school board policies or things are happening in our, uh, in our school system. That's our action, because we can't get into the hows of the processes. But we certainly can get into, how do we, um, um, make sure that we are doing the job and taking action? And for some leaders who are very action oriented like myself, I think it's very important for us to make sure that, you know, the work is advocacy and the work is action, right? And so, and, 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 and you will see the way people vote, how they vote, the way they advocate, the way they engage. Um, but the vote is the action, the policy that we make. And when you see these updated policies, that's how you'll see the action. And if you don't like the policies, hold us accountable. Reach out to us, communicate to the, to the board, why you don't like the policies. You know what I always find also very, very helpful? When people speak at school board meetings and they are respectful and they're like, even if that, they disagree. I, 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 I love disagreement because in disagreement, sometimes you learn in disagreement. When it's respectful and it was a safe space and you have a discussion that is, you know, it could be a courageous conversation. And, and certainly it could be uncomfortable. But when there's respectful and safe space to disagree, you can learn. And so we have different values. I'm, some people are more conservative, some people are more liberal. That's fine. But I think it's important for us to engage the community and for people who want change to happen, respectfully, uh, a- approach us, ask us about, um, you know, what can we do to help them? And share with us your stories, but most But most importantly, how do we resolve your issue? Be very specific with us on what you need to feel like your issue has been resolved. Attend our school board meetings, um, you know, that's a way to physically demonstrate support for our community, for our board members. Uh, come to the meetings, come to school events, um, go to community sessions and participate in forums like this and virtual meetings. All of these things is part of how you support your board members. You know, one of the things I can also say is we've, we've been through a lot. Um, many, many school boards across the entire nation um has uh been through unprecedented times and, and and some of us experience more hate and targeting than others. Sometimes a kind note, an, a, a letter, a, a, an email, um, a phone call, just to show your support. And you, and no complaining, no hate, no, just, just, you know what, I don't agree with you, but I see you, I see you trying, I see you, right? Oh, I agree with you, I like how you represent me, tell us. That's part of the support that you give us as well, because some people can't always attend the meetings, they can't always be physically present. But there's ways where you can be present in spirit, in heart, right? Um, sending emails to the governance team, which also includes the superintendent, participate in surveys. Many of the surveys have huge gaps around who's engaging in them. We have opportunities to do better related to survey participation. Please provide your feedback, um, get involved, like join the P T A if there's a P T A, if there isn't a P T A, start a P T A, right? Um, and, and, and do, do uh, uh, engage with, with, with community members. And you know, one of the things that um was said earlier was, was, was really looking at the Q B E formula and really looking at how can parents advocate around changing uh the Q B E formula? The first thing for people to understand is the Q B F formula, Q B E formula, has not been updated since the nineteen eighties. Nineteen eighties, it is two thousand and twenty-two. Our legislators need to help advocate for uh and, and work for uh changing the Q B E formula that is now, that is relevant to today, right? So that's, that's critical. Parents, community members, continue to fight for fully funding schools. Um, it is important that all of our schools are fully funded, whatever that looks like. I believe in parent choice, I believe parents can do whatever they need to do for the best need for their children. Children have needs and parents have the right to be able to meet the needs of their child, just like the school system has the right to be able to meet the needs of their child. Whatever your child needs, figure it out. Do what the best you can to meet the needs of your child. What I'll also say is advocate for um, for, for making sure that not only the needs of your child, but also think about how the uh, um, um, the system and how working as a community can help our entire community. Where, where the needs of your child can be met as well as the needs of, of other children. So fully funding schools can make that happen, right? Fully funding schools ensures equity. Um, and um, and looking at ways on how we can work with uh community organizations. How do we work with businesses? How do we work with, you know, uh, you know, other nonprofits? How do we create this sort of holistic community in a way that the business community, um, uh, nonprofit organizations and other private organizations can help uh supplement the, the, the needs, the costs of our schools, be able to ensure equity? And how, how do, how do we do that? Um, you know, we, our community members can help. Um, look, look for grant opportunities and look for opportunities for, you know, uh, uh, more, more funding. And then, and then finally, I would say, um, to, to reach out to your, all of your school board members, even the school board members you may disagree with. Reach out to them. And we, we are human beings. And I would say, as you reach out to community members and you share, you, whether you disagree or agree, do it with, 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 with respect for their humanity. Do it with empathy, right? And understand that we are all here for children. And when you know that the basic foundational uh, uh commonality that we have is that we care about children and we want all of our children to have what they need and to be successful. Come with that and then understand that, oh, I disagree about the masks. That's fine, I respect that. I don't like wearing masks, but I had to wear masks when the time was required for us to wear a mask because of the community spread. I felt like my personal opinion was that this was my part in trying to do what I could to, um, to help reduce the spread. And, 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 um, and, and my, my, my choice, my personal choice to get vaccinated was another part of that process. But again, this is personal, my personal opinion, right? Um, but I also respect the opinions of people who decided, you know, you know, um, um, other, you know, you know, not to get vaccinated for whatever reason. Um, but, 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 but what I would say is that we all have the responsibility as community members to ensure that we are safe and we are being responsible members to, um, to, 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 to not just focus on our own personal needs, but think about the greater needs of the community. And so, um, so I, I get people may differ from us. Um, or people may differ from me related to masks, people may differ from me related to, um, you know, some of the policies or advocacy um, that, that we've doing, um, we've been doing as board members or as individual board members, um, advocating for certain things. Um, I get it, some people, you know, may not share the same, um, you know, opinions that I have or perspectives I have related to ending the school to prison pipeline, um, um, classroom sizes or whatever it is. But it's okay if you disagree, share with us, give us some perspective. Yeah, I've learned so much from our community members who, um, who, who, who disagreed with me and, 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 and gave me a different perspective. And I've grown from that. So, so finally, I'd like to say growth mindset is so important. We encourage our children to have growth mindset and we should also have a growth mindset um, related to, um, you know, learning from one another and, 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 but for the greater good of the community. And figuring out how do we ensure, um, you know, equity and how do we ensure equality? And how do we ensure fairness in, in, in the process? And how do we ensure that all of our community members have a voice? And, um, and have represent, and our students have representation and our students are centered in this process. Our students must always be centered in this process and how we support our teachers. Without our teachers, we wouldn't have a school system. And so, I, I thank you all for the opportunity. Um, I thank um all the community members for, for supporting us as board members. And again, I encourage you all, reach out to the community members, uh, I'm sorry, reach out to the board members you even disagree with and, and talk to them and get to know them and you will see their humanity and you will see um, and can even possibly help them um, um, grow in a different way and learn. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for joining us for our civic education training. Um, again, as a black man just moving to Gwinnett County a couple of years ago, I'm very excited to see the first two black women elected in the county, uh, on the county school board, you all doing a great job. We know this role is not easy, uh, given the climate uh around the country. Uh, as the country continues to shift and we see uh different people, whether it's Hispanic or Asian or African American or uh, other black uh Americans that migrate here assume roles of power. Um, you know, we know that with that, that comes with some pushback. Uh, but at the end of the day, you have to do what's best for all the communities, including the ones that, you know, may not like the fact that you in charge, even though you may be making decisions to benefit them as well. They just don't like the fact that, that the person is, that's in charge. Uh, so again, um, thank you all, you all have a great weekend. I'll let you all go. Thank you, Karen Watkins, thank you, Dr. Teresa, I enjoy the rest of our weekend.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
All right, so as we get ready to close out our program, um, I'm just going to address some things I seen in the chat. We're really not going to address it, but kind of, sort of. Um, as far as funding, uh, you know, if you go back and watch our civic education training on the county commissioners, uh, Commissioner Cardin was the one that brought up uh that Gwinnett has a lar- the largest uh, local government, even larger than the city of Atlanta, uh, in the state of Georgia. So again, when I see things in the chat about how much money do you need and stillness like that, uh, you haven't studied the data. We had Stephen Owens on our, uh, I think he was either December or January, uh, general meeting. He's from Georgia Public Institute, um, so he's a data analysis in education. Um, he emphasized and talked about how Georgia has underfunded public schools eighteen of the last twenty years. Uh, so again, uh, Gwinnett is not immune to that. Obviously, if this whole entire state is underfunded in terms of uh money and resources and comes to education, uh, Gwinnett County and like other counties throughout the state are also part of that, that, that data statistic. So yes, the county is a little over nine hundred thousand people and growing, projected to be at about one and a half million people by the next census. Somewhere between one point two, one point five. So yeah, the school is going to need more resource. We always have funding for killing people, whether it's law enforcement or military or policing people. We need to fund our minds. Uh, so yeah, there's not a cap on how, how much budget school needs to uh provide the community, especially when you in one of the fastest growing counties in the state. I mean, you can drive up and down any part of Gwinnett and they're building a new uh, sub, uh, new neighborhood or, or a new community that's being built with about a hundred houses or seventy-five houses, two hundred houses to a community. There's construction all over this county. So, uh, ask any real estate agent, they'll tell you they're doing great. Yeah, Gwinnett, maybe not right now with the current slowdown, but trust me, they've been doing great over the last five years in terms of housing. So as more and more people come into the county, quite naturally, the schools are going to need those resources and that funding uh, to continue to make sure they're providing a good quality education, especially in an environment where they haven't even been getting the average level funding. Uh, if you look at the funding for the United States as a country, uh, and for terms of education, public education, we're at the bottom compared to other uh, countries, even countries that have uh less resources and money than we do. So again, um, uh, we support you all. Like I said, apparently we got some work to do in terms of getting state legislators in the House, State House and State Senate elected that will support funding of public schools. Um, so, uh, it's up to us as uh people that care about our children's education, care about public education, not in just uh talk, but deeds. Uh, and actually voting for people that will support that. Uh, so it's up to us to get out to the polls. Again, I got the election dates at the bottom. Uh, so please get ready for early voting. Uh, great time, school board, if you're in those districts that I mentioned at the top of the program, uh, please know you got a school board election, the election will not be in November, it will be in May. Uh, judicial elections for judges that will be in May. And then of course, financially, you have primary elections where you get to pick which party you want to represent, uh, your particular political party, whether that be Republican or Democrat. In the general election, you get a chance to elect them, uh, that person in the primary election. Um, now, did you have any closing remarks before I close out our program?
No closing remarks, just thank you so much for having us. Thank you for attending our program today.
And thank you again for being such a great host. Uh, again, if you missed the beginning of the program, you can go back and rewind, go through the top of the tape where uh Nai did a great job breaking down the role of the school board. Uh, again, thank you all for joining us and come back uh tomorrow evening at five o'clock. Um, which is March twenty-seven, we will have a meet the candidate forum um, with some uh, uh, great guests that are going to be running for state judge here in Gwinnett County. Uh, that'll be at five o'clock tomorrow, live on our uh Gwinnett N W A C P Facebook, YouTube and Twitter page. Again, continue to support what we do. Uh, again, we are a nonprofit organization, we don't get these uh huge grants, being a C four uh organization. So again, please support what we do and join us. We always need people uh to join us to be part of what we do to help us in our committees. We have some great committees, Nai is a part of membership and the pack. You know, we have education committee, we uh just restarted our communications committee. Uh, we have our legal redress committee that uh investigate complaints coming from the community and, and help the uh people in the community find some uh solutions and resources um, and direction, maybe even help them try to assist them and find an attorney to take their cases. Um, so again, uh, we're doing a lot and then of course, quite naturally, we have my committee to political action, uh, which does everything from G O T V, get out the vote, voter registration, uh, civic education, et cetera, et cetera. Again, thank you all for joining us as we wrap up our program. And like I said, come back tomorrow at five o'clock. And then we're going to, we'll have our meet the candidate forum, got some great guests. We're going to talk about uh this upcoming judicial election, these candidates will explain uh, why you should vote for them. So again, thank you all for coming. Y'all have a great rest of your weekend.
Thank you, thank you so much, have a good.
All right, y'all have a good evening now.